I'll call the roll, please.
Chair Boarders.
Present.
Commissioner Doris.
Here.
Commissioner Tingle. Commissioner Preston. Commissioner Perry.
Here.
Commissioner Wiggins. Commissioner Eswin.
Here.
The Quorum is present.
Thank you. Let's see. Commissioner, Commissioner Dawes, you'd like to sign the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The public is invited at this time to comment on and discuss any obit, ah, any topic that is relevant to or within the authority of the Planning Commission, including any matter that's not specifically included on the agenda as an action item. In addition, members of the public who wish to provide live public comment may do so during this designated period or any of the other designated periods during the meeting. For information that's included on the agenda, you may be, you may appear via telephone by dialing the numbers that were posted previously, and we will take all those comments now either at the first of the meeting or at the end of the meeting. If it happens to pertain to an item on the agenda, uh, we will just, we will take your, your comments now and we will discuss or answer any questions as they become relevant during that portion of the meeting. So is there any public comment now that we would like, that we can, uh, be privileged to?
Uh, yes, my name is Greg Short. Can I make the comment?
Mr. Short, can you speak up a little bit?
Yes, sir.
All right, yes, you're, you can make a comment. Is it on a particular item on the agenda or just a comment?
Just on that variance for that, that five and a half acre parcel.
Okay, proceed then, sir.
Okay, I, I feel that as with the existing, uh, subdivision to the north, they should maintain one acre or three and four tent acres on the edges to accommodate the one acre single-family people.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. You have any other comment?
Uh, no, I, I don't have a lot to go with because there was no, uh, site plan or how the lots were going to lay out, so that's all. My concern was I think we should follow the same thing that the previous subdivision did to the north. And that's all. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Is there any other comment?
Yes.
Please identify yourself and the item you'd wish to speak on.
Uh, my name is Krista Leach. Um, Valley View Trust at 4031 Center Drive, Carson City, Nevada, 89701, and I'm calling in on the zoning map amendment, ZA 2020 0005.
Okay, thank you. Proceed.
Okay, um, so people buy homes and property based on what is around them at the time of the purchase, including the applicable zoning laws. And our area in South Carson City is still largely rural with a lot of horse property. And we are now significantly hemmed in by the freeway. And unfortunately, we have never gotten and probably never will get the pedestrian equestrian overpass at Valley View that was initially planned. So to put a larger number of homes than currently zoned, uh, in our area with the resulting traffic is not prudent or fair to the local residents. There is already so much other development construction occurring on the south end of town that is already impacting us. And furthermore, it's hard to consider a level of tolerance for significant zoning amendments when we are not even presented with a drawing of what is envisioned for that subject property. So we are requesting, uh, any egress into the proposed new subdivision should only be from Silver Sage, uh, the same as the subdivision directly to the north. And that there should, um, not be any access on Clearview Drive as there is already a lot of traffic on that street. And any lots facing Center Drive should remain single-family one acre. As all of the other lots on Center Drive between Clearview and Valley View, except for one, they are between point nine three and two point oh seven acres. And Center Drive should remain consistent with the larger parcels on it, which seems to have been envisioned when they did the subdivision to the north of the subject parcel. And the lots to the south across Clearview should, um, average about point four one acres, so those lot, that Clearview should be the same or larger, and there should be some open space. And we are, um, requesting that it look contiguous to the subdivision to the north if the Planning Commission allows the zoning change. We would prefer everything to stay single-family one acre with nothing smaller than single-family 21,000 square feet. And that is, so, those are our comments, and that, I'm Krista Leach and my husband Lawrence Leach.
All right, thank you, Ms. Leach. Next comment?
There is no more public comment.
All right, thank you. Thank everybody for being understanding. Uh, approval of the minutes of April 29, 2020. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Mr. Eswin, did we get all your remarks in appropriately from the last meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Sure.
Commissioner Doris, for the record, uh, I move to approve the minutes of the, oh, gosh, I'm sorry.
April 29.
April 29, 2020 meeting without changes.
All right, is there a second? All right, we have a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no.
Aye.
All right, there, the vote is unanimous. Modification of the agenda. Items on the agenda may be taken out of order. The public body may combine two or more agenda items for consideration. The public body may remove an item from the agenda or delay discussion related to an item on the agenda at any time. Uh, Hope, is there any modifications or Lee, I guess Lee's still with us, is he? Is there any modifications, Mr. Plummel? Hearing none, I'm assuming no.
Hope Sullivan, Planning Manager, there are no modifications to the agenda.
All right, thank you. All right, meeting, item E1 LU 2020 0013 for possible action discussion and possible action regarding a request for time extension on SUP 15-077, a special use permit to allow a 90-unit multifamily apartment complex on properties owned rental commercial planned unit development located at 3808, uh, GS Richards Boulevard, APNs 007, 461, 22 and 23. Hope?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On December 17, 2015, the Board of Supervisors upheld the decision of the Planning Commission to allow a residential use in a non-residential zoning district. Specifically, the project is a 90-unit multifamily apartment complex. The initial approval provided for two years to commence the use, with the Planning Division authorized to grant a one-year extension. The Planning Division did grant a one-year extension, causing the expiration date to become December 17, 2018. At its medium January 15, 2019, the Planning Commission extended the expiration date to December 17, 2020. I think the memo says it's 2019, but the, um, last action of the Planning Commission extended it to December 17, 2020. The applicant is now seeking an additional year extension due to issues with the COVID-19. The municipal code 180208C authorizes the Planning Commission to approve additional time extensions in the event of circumstances beyond the control of the applicant will result in a failure to complete the conditions and commence the use. In making this decision, the Planning Commission must consider the continued appropriateness of the special use permit. Staff finds that the setting that existed in 2015 is substantially similar to the setting that exists today. However, in the intervening years, since this project was first entitled five years ago, other projects have either been entitled or constructed, thus impacting the capacity of the roadway, the water in the sources them. In recognition of this, staff is recommending an additional condition of approval that at the time of application for a construction permit, a signal warrant analysis at the intersection of North Carson Street and Silver Oak Drive, a water main analysis and sewer main analysis must be submitted for review. If any infrastructure is shown to exceed capacity, the project will be responsible for, um, to pay its pro rata share to upgrade the infrastructure based on the amount that the project causes the infrastructure to exceed capacity. Mark Turner, the applicant, is on the telephone, I believe. And, um, I'm happy to answer questions, and I'm sure Mr. Turner would like to speak with the commission. Thank you.
Uh, Hope, if, if this construction starts before December, this is all a moot point.
Correct. Um, cause if construction begins before December 2020, it's in compliance with the existing regulations.
Any other comments or questions for staff? Mr. Eswin, are you okay?
Yep, I'm fine.
Okay. Uh, is the applicant on the line?
Uh, yes, sir, I am. This is Mark Turner for the record.
All right, Mr. Turner. You said you had something you wanted to share with us?
Well, uh, just a, a, a brief summary of the reason that we're requesting the extension, and I'm sorry, I'm getting some feedback in my, um, uh, earphones here, so I'm going to do my best to, um, to muddle through this here. Uh, we had made plans to begin, um, some design modifications and the financing for this project in late January, early February. Uh, and then, um, as we all know, in the month of March, everything was kind of turned on its head. Um, as a result of, of, uh, people being put out of work as a result of, of, uh, the mandate to stay at home, uh, all of a sudden rents on multifamily properties were being impacted in a material way, which then led to, uh, financial institutions basically stepping on the brakes for any multifamily lending until this, this clarified itself. Um, there are still issues, both commercially and, uh, multifamily residential with people paying their rents on time, and therefore the institutional financing for these sorts of projects, uh, is on hold until there seems, then, until there's some stability that's been brought back into the, the situation.
Are there any other, are there any questions for the applicant? So you've, you've had this special use permit for five years and you're just now trying to get financing? Or you haven't been able in five years to get financing?
Well, actually, uh, there, there's been other factors that have prevented us from starting the project. Uh, but, uh, this was the year that we were planning on moving forward with it, and I had spoken with Hope late last year and early in this year about, uh, our desires to get going on it. And, uh, design professionals that we've been working with on it were, you know, essentially closed for a period of time. We have, uh, a significant body of work in front of us from a design and permitting standpoint that, uh, can't be done in a month, two months, or even three months. Uh, in addition to that, the financing for this, um, we had not sought to, to get financing until we were ready to start construction. And we had no notice and, and no way of knowing that, uh, the things that have taken place the last 90 days were going to take place that have dramatically impacted our ability to move forward.
Okay, did, do you have any objections to the additional conditions that, that staff recommended?
No, we, we had those discussions and, uh, we are okay with those requests.
Okay, thank you. All right, I guess we can bring it back to the commission. Um, thoughts, ideas, anybody?
Commissioner Doris, for the record, I have a question for staff after all. Is there a way to put a cap on this, uh, so it doesn't go on more than the additional year? Cause that's, I mean, that, especially given what we're talking about with growth management, you know, uh, property is at a prime and it's a shame to see a, a beautiful piece of land sitting there.
What's before you is the request for an extension, which, when you consider it, you consider, have circumstances changed since 2015? As well as, is there something outside the control of the developer that's causing this to happen? Um, in your consideration, you could decide now, in December 2020 stays. You could decide, yeah, it's true, he wants another year, that's right. That's all he gets is one more year, though, if that's what you do. Or you could come up with something in the middle based on that criteria that you're considering. If you give him a one-year extension, that would extend it to December 17, 2021. That's it. He has to commence construction or he has to come back to this Planning Commission, and you're looking at the exact same criteria again.
Thank you.
Yeah, which is exactly what we've done now twice? At least once. Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I have a comment. I, so, since 2015, this project has been in the works. And so we're now in 2020, and now the applicant is starting to look at design, uh, options and financing, what have you. I'm just, uh, mystified by why we're five years down the road from when this project was brought forward that they're now starting to look at this. And maybe, I, maybe there are reasons, and, and I'm, I'm sure there are, but I, I just find it a little bit, um, puzzling why we're five years down the road for this project, and now we have to grant an extension or are requested to grant an extension given the COVID-19 uh, issue that is currently facing us, but that's just in a, an opinion of mine.
It, it, it doesn't seem to me that any of the other apartment house complexes that are being built in the city have the same problem. And I, I don't, I know that this is, this is a little bit unique because it's in a, we had to change the zoning to get it built there. But, uh, if, we basically have, um, seven months until the end of this is over with. Uh, if, if we, if we extended this special use permit a year from today, I would be more inclined, I think, to, to go along with it as opposed to a year from December. Because a year from December, basically, in our, in our, in our planning, we allow ourselves to give an applicant a year because of things that happen. In this case, we're given almost 20 months. Uh, it just seems like way too much time. And I've assumed-
May I comment on that?
One second, please. I'm assuming that, that Hope, we, it, it's possible for us to extend that a year from today as opposed to a year from December?
If, when the commission discusses this and you're looking at, again, if we look at, it's 18020, what you're considering is, are there circumstances beyond the control of the applicant which are resulting in the failure to complete the conditions and commence the use? And you're also looking at whether or not those findings could still be, that were made in 2015 could still be met, which would mean the setting was similar. So if your concern is, well, I think I can make this for a year from today, but I'm not sure I could, I could make those findings if we started the clock in December and went out to December, then yes, but it should be framed according to, to these findings from the code.
Yes.
Could you please elaborate a little bit more on the extension for a year as far as essentially the responsibility for the sewer and the water, any changes on that? Because I don't think that this, as a planning commission, we've actually considered that on any other property.
Okay, I think Stephen Potte is on the, um, Stephen, do you want to speak to this?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, so, yeah, one of the things that has changed in this area is since this project, um, was last extended, the code has changed for, um, what is considered a full sewer main for specific sizes. And there's a main downstream of this project that is, um, close to capacity. It's not at capacity, but it's close. Um, and that is with this project. Um, but, but I think that they should hand is with the amount of time that, that this has been entitled and, um, other projects in the area coming in, we're looking at the potential for subsequent projects to come in and have to pay for improvements to that sewer main based on capacity that's reserved with this entitlement. So that's kind of the background.
I, I can kind of elaborate a little bit, and Stephen, if you'll listen in and make sure I, I get this right, because I think there's a data set that, um, Commissioner Preston's aware of that the other commissioners may not be aware of. And that is when, when people model for water and sewer and for traffic, in fact, they're modeling not based on what's developed, but what's developed plus the entitlement. And so I think, and Commissioner Preston, of course, will speak for herself, but I know in the past you've had concerns about entitlements, capacity being assumed as existing when it's an entitlement that's not built. That would still be the case. And Stephen, can you confirm that that's correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Commissioner Preston, is that, are you satisfied? Now, I can't see anything but your eyes, so.
I know, and the thing is, is I feel like I'm invisible and I have to make sure I don't mumble. Anyway, um, my, my question is, is let's say, and just do hypothetically on this, is let's say that another property that has a special use permit, and I believe there is one that's across the street, is if it goes and it goes before Mr. Turner's, does it bump his, because I'm aware of that sewer area that they're looking at? And my question is, is, you know, um, who, who's on first, is really it? Who is on first? Because i- is it, is it the special use permit people, the one that, that they have across the street? Is it Mr. Turner's? Is it, let's say a developer comes in there and buys the Ballardini Ranch? Who's, who's on first?
Stephen, do you have-
In this situation, the condition? Yeah, so in this situation, the condition requires them to do, um, impact studies at the time they're applying for a building permit. So they'll have to analyze, um, both the existing conditions plus any entitled projects. But yes, if there's, if there's an entitled project, they'll have to include, um, that demand in their report. Does that answer your question?
Is that a yes or a no? Are there any other comments from the commission? Mr. Perry?
I'd like to hear the applicant was gonna comment there.
Yeah, I, I was, I was getting to that. Okay. Mr. Turner, do you have something you wanted to say?
Yeah, I just wanted to, to add a, a, a point of, of clarification on a couple of comments that were made. Um, one is that someone commented that the existing apartment projects that are underway uh, don't seem to be having any trouble. Well, they were able to obtain their financing, and most of those that are underway are at least half, if not two-thirds constructed. Uh, some of them have been under construction for two or three years. So they weren't, uh, heading to the bank at the time, uh, these, these controls and restrictions on people's ability to move about and, and go to work, uh, came into play. Second off, the, the COVID thing is not over. Uh, people still haven't gone back to work and in many cases are still not paying their rent, both on commercial, retail, and residential. So those risks have not been removed from the market, and a number of those financial products that would be necessary for something like this to move forward have not been brought back to the marketplace as of yet. So if you were to give us one year from today, we have no means of assessing, uh, when, uh, the banking marketplace will decide that it's safe to reoffer those types of products out there, knowing that people are going to be, uh, once again, paying rents on time. Um, and, uh, and, and things of that nature that would allow them to make loans, knowing that they would be paid by those who take them out. So that's, that's all I wanted to comment on, and thank you for the second opportunity to comment.
Okay, thank you, sir. I, I realize this is a little awkward for all of us, so thank you. All right, any other comments from the commission?
Commissioner Doris, for the record. Um, I think a year, I like the idea for me, about a year from today, uh, personally, for what it's worth. Uh, I think that it's been five years and, uh, most of the stuff that comes in front of us has already gone through a little general design, and so clearly there's not really a big, uh, urgency of any kind to build on this property. And it's in a good location, it's, it's, you know, property's at a premium, um, so it's sort of a, you know, bait the hook or go home. And, uh, so I, I like the idea of a year personally, and I, I think the commission should consider that.
Any other comments?
Yeah.
Mr. Perry?
Commissioner Perry, for the record. So, so being the new person here, I wasn't here when some of the other, um, renewals were, were done. But I just note that, you know, this is a planned unit development, and, uh, this developer, um, is fairly well-known in the community and is building homes and houses over there. We had one on our, our agenda the last time there. Um, and, you know, I do understand the financial, the financial uh, issues that are going on out there in, in the market, uh, right now. Um, I wouldn't have any, any problem granting, you know, a year's extension, cause, cause the alternative is, is that, you know, it ends and then he, and then the developer comes back and goes through the same process all over again. And he has less, less security in going out and trying to get financing because he doesn't have a special use permit in his hand. I think for what we've talked about here as far as trying to get more housing built in the house, that, or more housing built in the city, it probably favors extending it, uh, from a probability standpoint, if that makes sense? Thanks.
My, my only comment would be is this, this development is a multifamily apartment, not a PUD. It's in a PUD zone. But it is a special use permit for a multifamily apartment.
And for the record, I, I completely agree. I just think that five years is a pretty long time. There's clearly no indication that they're going to build anytime soon, is, is my only concern. And with the property being in that location, it, I agree with you. It's a, it, we need housing in this area, so that's what I would, that, for what it's worth. Thanks.
All right, well, would somebody like to try and make a motion then?
Mr. Chair?
Who's calling?
This, this is Commissioner Eswin?
Yes, sir.
Can I make a motion?
You certainly may.
I will, um, let's see if I can find it here. I move to extend the expert, the expiration date of SUP-15-077 to December 17, 2021, subject to the additional condition of approval which states at the time of the application for a construction permit, is the signal warrant analysis at the intersection of North Carson Street and Silver Oak Drive, a water main analysis and a sewer main analysis must be submitted for review. If any infrastructure is shown to exceed capacity, the project will be responsible to pay its pro rata share to upgrade the infrastructure based on the amount that the project causes the infrastructure to exceed capacity.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Are there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
All right. Motion, motion carries. I'm making a note in my calendar and then I hope I don't ever, this, this will not happen again. again. Okay, item number two. Discussion and possible action regarding a special use permit for residential land, residential use on Land Zone General Commercial located at 3993 Lapeer Drive. Hope.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The applicant is seeking a residential use in a non-residential zoning district. Specifically, the applicant is seeking to build a fourplex on .39 acres. Each unit will have a two-car garage and there are four parking spaces proposed in the rear. Over 6,000 square feet of the site is proposed for landscaped open space. The applicant is looking to, is proposing a two-story building with T-111 roof siding on the first floor exterior walls, LP smart side cedar textured lap siding on the second story exterior walls, and architectural asphalt shingle roofing. This is sort of an interesting area. I'm hoping you had a chance to go out there. I put up the zoning map for you. What you'll see is on the bottom outlined is the subject property. And you'll see where you see the pink, that's all Zone General Commercial. But if you had a chance to go out there, it's been developed with the exception of the property fronting on Fairview as residential. The property to the east of the subject property is vacant and to the south of the subject property is open space, so city-owned open space. So our diagonal from the property is a rock yard. If you are out there, it's just they store rocks there. And I talked to the applicant and I was concerned if we go residential here, is there going to be a conflict with the rock yard? And they're very familiar with this area and assured me the rock yard just is very passive and quiet. But I hope you had a chance to go there because it's a really interesting section of the city. So relative to finding two, that was the one finding I wanted to talk about. Go back here. Is just, as I mentioned, just south of the site is the city-owned open space. Finding two tells us that the use will not cause objectionable physical activity. So what our Parks Recreation Open Space Department has asked is that they not take direct access from the subject property to the open space. The city is very careful about where open space is accessed and they don't want informal access points. They are, this Parks Rec and Open Space Department is open to some type of access agreement where they can kind of understand how the access would be designed. But short of having an access agreement with the city, we would condition it that there will be no access directly from the site to the open space. The access is just up on Lapeer, just to the east of the vacant property. That's east of the subject property, so it's very easy to get to. Otherwise, the seven findings plus the two supplemental findings that are required, staff found those could be made in the affirmative and we are recommending approval subject to conditions. I believe the applicant, Mark Funk, is on the telephone and I'm happy to answer questions.
Yes. I'm here.
Commissioner? Commissioner? All right, hang on a minute, sir, please. Hope, what about the runoff?
Stephen, do you want to speak to drainage?
Yeah, this is Stephen Potte for the record, Carson City Development Engineering. So as far as the runoff, they will be required to do a drainage study. And based on how close they are to the creek, or just to the river, our chief stormwater engineer anticipates that they will not be required to have any detention because that can actually compound issues if you hold back the water. You want to get it out to the river more quickly before your high flows come down. But the short answer is they're going to be required to do a drainage study at building permit.
Okay.
And I'll point out that condition of approval, number 10, does require the technical drainage study be submitted with the application for a building permit. So it's being tied to the construction of the site.
Stephen, the retaining wall that's shown on the south and west side, is that, you know, stacked cinder block? Is that a solid retaining wall? And is there tiebacks that are associated with that to keep it from sloughing down the hill?
My recollection is that they didn't get into that kind of detail. But we'll be looking for that level of detail once they get to the point that they're getting construction permits.
Okay, well, you know, with almost no permeable surface, all the water that's going to accumulate is going to pack up behind that retaining wall. And if we're not careful, it'll just wash the whole thing back down this hill. Because it's really kind of a, it's kind of clawed in there. And I think it's all going to be interesting, but I'm really concerned about the drainage. And any other questions for staff? Hope?
So I'm assuming, and that's always dangerous, that there was a traffic study done as far as access ingress egress off of Fairview Drive, because that's a fairly busy little thoroughfare. And I believe there is a traffic light to the north of that intersection, but I'm just kind of wondering what the traffic study found related to the ingress and egress of, off of Lapeer Drive.
So our traffic impacts are required based on different triggers. Those 500 trips per day or 80 trips per peak hour. And this project wouldn't meet the trigger. It would actually be, it's just one trip per hour per unit. So it's well below the 80 trips per hour that would trigger the traffic impact study requirement.
Okay.
Well, I understand it might not have triggered a traffic study. There obviously is going to be somewhat of an impact on ingress and egress off of that street because it's an interesting little street coming off of that area. So I don't know, I just, especially with the slope. So just thinking that could be interesting, coming in and out of there.
I also failed to mention that when looking at this special use permit, since it's commercial zoning, there's uses that could go in there that could potentially have a higher impact than what's being proposed. So as far as the difference between what's being proposed and what's just allowed with the zoning, that also comes into play with that decision.
Any other questions for staff?
I got one.
Okay. Mr. Wiggins?
Commissioner Wiggins, number six condition, a bike rack must be installed. Could staff please explain why a fourplex needs a bike rack?
It is required in our development standards. Let me just pull that open.
Is it based on the zoning, the commercial?
I think it's land use. Okay, in our development standards, it tells us that the orientation and location of a building should provide for pedestrian and bicycle activity and access. Bike racks shall be located in safe and convenient locations close to a building entrance. Clustering of multiple buildings should create pedestrian plazas, courts, patios, and linked architecturally with arcades, trellises, and similar open structures. So the development standards apply to a number of uses. The commissions looked at that. And so it was in reliance of Section 1.2.2 that that condition was included.
I guess I just don't recall having bike racks in multifamily.
It would likely have been a condition in the other apartments, or they would have already had included it. You had apartments over on Lil Lane. I'm trying to think what other apartments you've seen lately. I feel like you've seen some.
I think the ones on Appion had them on the plans.
But then it's not a condition.
Well, no, Dave, if they're already there, you don't have to call it out.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Perry.
Number 14, and this is just from my own understanding because I didn't, what is the residential construction tax? Do we, is that something that's collected on all units or is this just specific to the zoning here?
Okay, it's not collected on all units. So essentially, that's a park, you can think of it as a park tax, but it's not a park tax. It's a residential construction tax. So when you pull a building permit for residence, then a dwelling, then you pay a fee, I believe it's $1,000, and it goes into the certain bucket, we'll call it the residential construction tax bucket, which is for our Parks Rec and Open Space. Now, if you provide Parks Rec and Open Space amenities on site, as they're doing, for example, in Schultz Ranch, I think Silver Oak as well, I believe, then that money's not, it's refunded to you or it's not collected because you've made the offer of an amenity in lieu of that fee. So since this won't include an amenity, the fee will apply.
Is our applicant still on the telephone with us?
Yes.
All right, sir. Have you read the conditions of approval that the staff has provided and are they acceptable to you?
Yes.
All right, do you have any other comments for us?
No, not really.
Okay. Do we have any questions for the applicant while we have him on the line? Okay, hearing none? Let's bring it back to the commission then and see if we'll resolve this one. Oh, I did have a question. In your, in your application, you indicated that there would be eight kids in four apartments. That, you know, you were talking about the impact on the school system and you said the maximum number of students would be eight. It's only four two-bedroom apartments. Yeah, okay. Just a comment. All right. Okay. Any other comments from the staff or from the commission? If not, can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion. Commissioner Doris for the record. I move to approve LU-2020-0010 based on the ability to make the required findings and subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report.
All right, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Wiggins. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no? All right, unanimous vote. Item number three. Discussion and possible action regarding a zoning map amendment to change the zoning from special, from single-family one acre to single-family 6,000 on property located at the northeast corner of Silver Sage Drive and Clearview Avenue, APN 009124-03. Heather?
Thank you, Heather Ferris, for the record. The subject property is approximately 5.26 acres in size, is located immediately south of the South Point subdivision, and is bounded by Silver Sage, Clearview, and Center Drives. The property is currently zoned, single-family one acre, and the master plan designation is medium-density residential. The applicant is seeking a zoning map amendment to single-family 6,000. The zoning map amendment is the only matter before you today. There is no proposed development for consideration at this time. The master plan policy is a policy document that outlines the city's vision and goals for the future and provides guidance for making choices regarding the long-range needs of the community. The zoning map, as you all know, is a tool to implement the master plan and state law requires the zoning to be consistent with the master plan. The current zoning of single-family one acre is not consistent with the underlying master plan of medium-density residential. The medium-density residential designation provides for single-family residential neighborhoods at a density of three to eight dwelling units per acre. Compatible zoning districts include single-family 6,000, mobile home 6,000, single-family 12,000, and mobile home 12,000. The master plan also anticipates adjacent properties will develop into higher densities in the future, with properties to the north and south being designated as medium-density residential and properties to the west being designated as mixed-use employment. And about two months ago, three months ago now, you recommended approval of townhome development immediately west of this project across Silver Sage. Properties to the east across Center Drive are designated as low-density residential in the master plan and not anticipated to develop into lots smaller than one acre in size. In order to make a recommendation of approval to the Board of Supervisors, the planning commission must make all three findings in the affirmative. As outlined in the staff report, staff has made all findings in the affirmative and is recommending approval of the zoning map amendment. Staff has received seven written comments either objecting to or voicing concerns with proposed amendment. You have copies of all of those in front of you. The primary concerns outlined in the comments include traffic impacts, impacts to groundwater and stormwater, and providing a buffer of one-acre lots along Center Drive and Clearview Drive. With regard to the request for buffer lots, again, there's no development project before you, so we cannot discuss project design. But I would point to finding two, which is land use compatibility with existing adjacent land uses and impacts to other properties in the vicinity. Staff has made finding two in the affirmative because the single-family 6,000 zoning would allow for development consistent with the master plan and parcels to the north. This area would act as a transition between the commercially zoned parcels to the west and the low-density parcels to the east and has been transitioning into higher density and intensity uses. Before taking questions, Stephen Potte with Development Engineering would like to address concerns raised with regard to traffic and stormwater impacts. And after Stephen's done, the applicant's representative, Susan Pansky, should be on the line, and I'm sure she would have, like to have the opportunity to make comments as well.
Okay. There any immediate questions for staff? Stephen? Stephen, you had some?
Again, this is Stephen.
Did you have some comments you wanted to make?
Say it again?
I said, did you have comments that you wanted to make? Over.
Yeah, I wanted to address some of the concerns that were given to staff. Again, this is Stephen, Carson City Development Engineering. We saw a few comments, including at the beginning of our meeting today, where folks were concerned that there was no projects shown for this zoning map amendment. And again, since it's just changing the zoning, they don't have a specific project designed yet. And that does come into play with a lot of the engineering impacts, although we do have a general idea of what to expect. We don't know exactly what the impact will be, so it's hard to say if any mitigation will be needed, say, to the water system or sewer or streets. There's also a concern that projects are evaluated in isolation. And as the commission saw with the previous item on GS Richards, we do require impact studies to look at entitled projects and, as well as the existing conditions. So that should be taken care of. There were some concerns that were expressed with water and the availability of the city's water. This project would be required to connect to the city water system. It's all interconnected, so it's not like there's one area of the city that's, that can be low on water. They're all tied together. And the city's water master plan, when it's evaluating build-out and what to anticipate for demand, it looks at the city's master plan rather than zoning. So since this zoning is within the existing master plan, that density was accounted for in the water master plan as well. There was a concern about groundwater contamination. There was groundwater issues on the south side of town due to the amount of septic tanks in the area. And again, this, this project would be required to connect to city sewer, so you wouldn't be getting additional leach fields contaminating. so you wouldn't be getting additional, um, leach fields contaminating the groundwater. And, uh, surface water runoff is typically not considered, um, a source of pollution for the groundwater. There were concerns about the entrance locations. For that, we have design standards, which, um, are based on, uh, speed limit, um, as well as some other factors. But typically, there's just a minimum distance from an intersection that you're looking at. So once, once the project comes forward, we'd look at, um, just the minimum distance from, from an intersection there. Functional classification of the adjacent roadways was mentioned. And, um, see, Silver Sage is currently a minor collector, and, uh, Clearview is actually considered an arterial because before the freeway came through, Clearview was up at, uh, 7,000 trips per day. Uh, Silver Sage is at 5,000 trips per day, just for, for reference. But, um, the, the range for a collector is 1,000 to, to 8,000. So Silver Sage is, you know, right in the, the middle of that. It's not really close to the point where the city would, would consider changing the classification. And, and even if we did, that doesn't affect really much in terms of the design, other than the thickness of the pavement. But it does have an impact on, um, how, how roads can be, be funded. Uh, although for Carson City, it's, it's not that big of an impact for funding either. So I think that covers all the different items that, that I heard, uh, or read about before the meeting. So unless that, unless the commission has any questions related to engineering, I'd be happy to answer those.
Are there any other questions for staff?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I may speak specifically to Mr. Schwartz's comments and Ms. Leach's comments, which we heard under public comment. Both of those residents expressed concern that, and Stephen mentioned it, that they're not seeing a development project. And in all honesty, actually, when this pro, when this item was first written up for noticing, there was a sentence in the summary that said that, yeah, this land will be subdivided. I said, no, we don't have a subdivision in front of us. We have a zoning map amendment in front of us. And I actually had that, I removed that sentence. But what does that mean? You just heard a lot from Stephen about design guidelines. When a subdivision comes in, there will be a public hearing. This commission will have a hearing. Just as the residents were notified of the zoning map amendment, they will be notified when an application comes in for a subdivision of land. At that point, this commission will be looking at utilities. They'll be looking at traffic. They'll be looking at neighborhood compatibility. You will be reviewing the details of a development design. Right now, you're, you're looking at an amendment to a zoning map, and you have three findings to look at when you, when you consider that. And those, those findings have been outlined in your staff report. But I don't want any members of the public to think that after this, they don't get to participate. They absolutely will be notified when a tentative map is being considered by this commission, and this commission will be seeking public input and public comment on that project. Thank you.
Okay. Any staff or commission, Mr. Perry?
Commissioner Perry, I do have a couple of questions for, for staff. So, so at that point in time is when, uh, we could address the access in and out of this property, whether it be on Clearview or Silver Sage, as one of the comments was, right?
That's correct.
But we can't do it now with a zoning amendment.
That's correct.
Great. My other question is for you, Heather. How long has this been, um, in the master plan as medium-density residential?
From what I was able to find, back to 2006.
Okay, so the, so the, the last update, 2006, has it as that? So it's been that all, all, all along? It's not some?
For some time now, yes.
Some reason. And the third is, I don't know who can answer this question, but I remember one of the comments from one of the residents around there said that they had a groundwater well. And I'm, I was baffled by that and just had the question, I don't know who could answer it. But are their ground, are all of these one-acre lots down here on groundwater wells? Or are they on city water? This is not related to this, but it's just for, for knowledge, you know? I, are they on groundwater wells? Really?
This is Stephen Potte with Development Engineering for the record. So there, there are areas of town where they were developed with wells, and then the city came in subsequent to the development with water mains. In that situation, like if a well goes dry, they would have to connect. But yeah, they, it's, it's not the norm, but it, it does happen where you have that situation.
So, so they have the ability to, to tie into the city's system because it is present there now? Is that what you're saying?
That's correct. They would have to abandon their wells if they have them, but, um, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Susan Pansky, the applicant. Susan, are you on the line?
Yes, I am, Susan Pansky for the record, representing the applicant.
Yeah?
So I don't actually have a lot. Can you hear me?
Yes, I'm sorry, go ahead. Over.
I'm sorry, sure. I actually don't have a lot to add, but I do appreciate all of staff's comments and their presentation. I think they covered everything really well. I just, um, really reiterate that the master plan has been in place on this property since 2006 for medium-density residential, and it allows for a density of up to eight units per acre. And the zoning that we're requesting is within that density range. And I'll note that the properties to the south of Clearview Drive as well have the medium-density residential designation in the master plan. So the same density range applies there as well. So we're not asking for anything outside of what the master plan had contemplated in its last update. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any additional.
Is there any other questions for the applicant? Appears to be none, Susan, thank you. Okay. I think the biggest concern we heard was over the design, and we don't have a design. And I think, I hope you tried to, to give everybody the assurance that once we had a design, their concerns about entry and all these other things would be taken care of at that time. When you, when you said, when that, when we get a set of plans. So, uh, is there any other discussion? Is there a motion?
Uh, we'll make a motion. Commissioner Doors for the record. I move to recommend to the Board of Supervisors approval of the zoning map amendment ZA-2020-0005 as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
There we go. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
Uh, one no.
I feel they did not meet the, uh, finding number two to my satisfaction.
Item E4. Discussion and possible action regarding a special use permit for this new scale house at the city landfill on property zone public recreation, public regional and general commercial located at 4,000 Flint Drive, APN 010691-04. Heather?
Thank you, Heather Ferris, again for the record. The subject parcel is zoned public regional and is the site of the Carson City landfill. The applicant is proposing to construct a new scale house for landfill operations and is therefore requesting a special use permit. A special use permit is required prior to commencing any use in the public regional zoning district. The proposed location of the scale house is surrounded primarily by city-owned land, including the existing scale house and main landfill operations to the south and the city's disc golf course to the west. The scale house facility includes the scale house itself, as well as two inbound scales and one outbound scale. The scale house is proposed to be single-story, approximately 18 feet in height, and 880 square feet in size. The existing scale house facility would remain, uh, functional until the new facility is completed. Once the new facility is operational, the existing facility, uh, would be demolished. The Planning Commission has authorized to approve a special use permit upon making the seven required findings a fact. Staff was able to make all findings in the affirmative and is recommending approval of the special use permit subject to six conditions of approval, which are included in the staff report. Um, I'm available for questions. And Dan Stuckey, Darren Anderson, and Rick Cooley with the city's engineering division are representing the project. And, uh, I believe they're available on the phone if you have questions for them.
Okay. Any questions for staff? I have my favorite question. The height of the building?
Yes, the height of the?
Yeah, you said plus or minus 18 feet.
Yes, so?
But the plans don't show a height, and?
So in discussions with the applicant, um, the, the height measured as outlined in code, so from essentially the average adjacent grade to the average height of the highest, uh, roof surface, they are proposing at this point, um, 15 and a half feet, but they did request that we include a little bit of a buffer in there for them so that if with the final design, it's a little bit taller, they don't have to come back to the Planning Commission.
Okay, but I thought we were measuring to the midpoint of the roof and not the highest?
It's the average, it's the average of the highest roof surface, which is what the code calls for. Or midpoint, that's, it's the same thing.
A midpoint is different than the highest part of the roof. The midpoint is halfway between the eve and the peak.
According to the code.
Okay, we got it. All right, does the applicant? Are there any other questions for staff?
Yes. Commissioner Perry? And this is, and this is for the engineering staff, if we can. I'm just, I'm just curious, because I mean, I like the design of this, and I'm a regular user of the dump. And, uh, just curious, what triggered this? Is it the volume going into the dump? You'd have, oh, the lines getting too long? I see you've got one, I see you've got one scale for, it looks like the public, and one for waste management and the commercial users. But I, I'm just curious if there was an explanation of what made it necessary.
Yeah. The applicant, I think, can answer that. One of them's on the line.
Yeah, this is Rick Cooley, uh, the, uh, Operations Manager for Public Works. What really brought this to, to a head was our current scale has reached the end of their useful life and are kind of imminent failure at this point. So we're kind of racing against time to purchase new scales. And at the same time, we can rebuild it in place. So we're going to build a new scale house and actually take care of some of the issues we have with the scale house, of the scales being remote from the scale house, and so try to improve some of our efficiencies out there since our, our, our levels of service have increased tremendously, especially over the last year. So the, the main thing that brought it together was just the, the old, our old facility is broken down and needing replaced.
Thank you.
I have a question for Rick.
Okay.
Commissioner Doors for the record. Is this, I noticed that we're going to have two inbound scales, but one is listed as a commercial scale. And then, you know, the one outbound scale still. Is it, do you guys anticipate that this is going to increase efficiency of the, the, whatever, the wayhouse or whatever you guys are calling it? Are you going to be able to, to get more people in and out quicker with this?
That's the, that's the plan. So the plan is that, that remote outbound scale, that commercial scale, is going to be an automated scale. So our commercial users, it'll be any commercial user that wishes to use that. We already have their air weights in our system, so they will pull up onto that scale unassisted. They'll go up to a kiosk. It will, it will read by either a, a barcode in their windshield or a key card. We're still working that out. It'll read them, know who they are, register them into the system, print out a receipt for them. They will, they will then leave, go out and dump, and then they will bypass the outbound scale on our layout. So that's, that's the purpose of this, this whole thing is for definitely waste management, Douglas disposal, and any of our other commercial customers that, that wish to take advantage of that, that have standardized vehicles they bring to the landfill, to be able to get them in and out sooner and bring those folks out of the, the queuing line that we have.
Thank you. And as one of your commercial users, I think that sounds fantastic. Thank you.
Are, are you, as the applicant, except, are agreeable to all the conditions?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay. I hoped you were. All right, is there any other questions for staff or the applicant? All right. Let's bring you back. Comments or motions? All right. Commissioner Tingle?
I move to approve special use permit LU-2020-0014 based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Perry seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Commissioner Aswin, was that an aye?
That was an aye.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Chairperson Borders?
President?
Vice Chair Doors?
Here.
Commissioner Tingle? Commissioner, um, Wiggins? Commissioner Paston? Commissioner Perry?
Here.
Commissioner Aswin?
Here.
I know you're there.
All right. At this time, the public is invited to comment on or discuss any topic that is relevant to or within the authority of the Growth Management Commission, including any matter that was not specifically included on the agenda as an action item. Are there any comments for the Growth Management Commission?
There is no public comment, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes of June 26, 2019? We have a motion to approve those minutes? Moved by Commissioner Tingle, is there a second? I'll second. The only other one there, all right. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Are there any abstentions?
I abstained, I apologize. Commissioner Doors abstained for the record. I was not present during that meeting.
Uh, Commissioner Perry, I was not on the commission during that meeting, so I can also abstain.
Okay. So the motion carries. All right. Discussion and possible action regarding the maximum number of residential building permit allocations under the Growth Management Ordinance for the years 2021, 2022, and an estimated number of residential building permits for the years 23 and 24, establish the number of building permit allocations within the development and general property owners' categories, and establish a maximum average daily water usage for commercial and industrial building permits as a threshold for the Growth Management Commission review. Mr. Pummel, are you on, in the neighborhood?
I am, thank you. Lee Pummel, Community Development Director. Yeah, I'll be given, you have the report in your packet. I'm going to have Hope advance the slides for me up on the screen there and go from that. If, uh, what I'll do is I have a brief presentation of a few slides. I'll, uh, I'll ask her to advance and stop at each one. So if you have any questions on each, at, at that time, give me a chance. But if I could have the slides put up on the main screen, I'll go ahead. So this is the, uh, growth man, this is our annual growth management report, and that's required, and just, there's, I think there's a slide before that one. Carson City Municipal Code requires the Plan Commission and Board of Supervisors to establish the maximum number of building, of permits for residential units each, each year per the Growth Management Ordinance that's been in place since 1978. In addition to that, there's, uh, other, other unique things like the- And you get, you get a couple of those per year for uses that are higher water, where they come, they have to come to the Planning Commission or Growth Management Commission. Secondly, this is the first time we've combined this annual report with the reporting requirement to state legislators per Assembly Bill 240, which was, which is a Northern Nevada Regional Growth Management Cooperation Bill. And, and really, the bill asks for roughly the same stuff that we provide on an annual basis in our Growth Management Report. So with your recommendation of this report to the board, and the board's approval of it, we'll then forward it on to the legislators to fulfill that requirement. To the next slide, please. As the code says, in, in setting your annual total residential number of permits for each year, these are the things that are, that are supposed to be considered. These are the resources that are considered in your decision on this. This started out in 1978 as a water and sewer issue only. Over the years, it's evolved, and we, of course, get comments from the various city departments, growth managements used in other places in the country, just for, for community services and city services in general. Next, next slide, please. So this is kind of that, this is that history of the, of the number of allocations on the top line there that have been permitted, with the white line below that being the number that have been pulled through building permits each year since 1978. As you can, as you can see, the, the number of permits available have been much higher than, than a typical year of the actual number of permits pulled. That higher, that upper level number represents about what would, what would equal about three percent growth, residential growth in the city in any, any given year, if all of those permits were pulled every year. But as you can see in the numbers down below there, with some averages over different periods of time, for example, over the last thirty years, it's been about 240, 242 permits per year on average. But another thing to note that this shows is that, you know, in any given year, you might get a lot of, you know, why, to answer the question of why do we need to have so many allocations if we're only getting an average of that much? Well, in any given year, one large apartment complex comes in for permits like in, like in 2018, and they can take up a large chunk of them. And that was, that represents 370 units on the Carson Hills apartments that are, that are still under construction, even though they were pulled towards the end of 2018. Any question on the history, on this, at this point, on the history of those? Can I move on?
Go ahead. Continue.
Yeah, yeah, a couple, so the, the next couple of slides here relate to our, relate a little bit to the water capacity and land use capacity analysis that we recently completed. And one of the earlier, one of the earlier items that we had, we were talking about a water capacity analysis, where we used the, the maximum density of, of master plan land use to make, to make assumptions of maximum, maximum development in the future for the purposes of a water analysis, and how much, how many residential units could we have? So based on that analysis, this just kind of shows, we have in the neighborhood of 24,000 housing units in Carson City right now. And if you turn every parcel that's designated for residential use, and, and including commercial properties that already have an approval, but, and then besides those residential designated properties to their maximum density, this is, that's what the upper bar there shows. We get up into the neighborhood of 32,000 units, and that's the dip, that's, that's the growth, that's our, under the current master plan. Our capacity and the water capacity analysis was done to that upper bar there, assuming the maximum density. Just to show, go to the next slide, please, and just to show a little bit more of how we did that, you know, this is a snapshot of the map we used, and it's kind of a heat map showing, based on the number of future units that we're considering planning for. You know, the darker red is more units, and you have orange and yellows as it goes down. But we've gone down to the parcel level, looked at approvals or master plan density, and I'm going to zoom in further, go to the next slide. This is zooming in a little more into this tool. As you, as we zoom in, the number of potential units that we're assuming pop up and are shown here. And this is, this is in the South Carson area. You can see Snyder going down there at the angle. In fact, this is in the vicinity of that Clearview and Silver Sage. So one of those, one of those 34-unit properties there is, is the one that was considered earlier. So I just, just showing that, the water capacity analysis that we've been doing, and it's in the GIS database now to be used for other long-range planning purposes, are assuming that these properties are developed at, at a higher density than they are now. I also want to point out that the number, that maximum number and that upper limit also really assumes a lot of redevelopment of existing developed parcels. In other words, if there's a, if there's a one-acre parcel, if there's a parcel zone one acre that has 2.1 acres, even though there's a house on it, it assumes there's going to be another house there at some time in the future, even though there may not be. As you can see at the lower part of this, it assumes if the master plan density is a higher density, there may be one parcel, one, one house on a, on a one-acre parcel now. But it assumes that someday they're, they'll turn that down and develop to the maximum density. So that, that's not something that would likely happen in the near, in the near future, but that is part of that full build-out, worst-case, so quote-unquote, worst-case scenario for the part of water, water usage and sewer usage, and then also that gets translated into long-range transportation planning as well. Before I move on from this, any, any questions on the, on this capacity analysis tool? Hearing that, thank you. And then that I'll translate, so look, this is projections of population based on, based on kind of a, a guess on how fast the, the city will grow. Just to, to see, you see the dark line there on the bottom, that is the official state demographer's projection for growth in Carson City. If we just use that, we wouldn't need to plan for much growth in the next 15 years. I don't know, he's, why, it's pretty, was the term bearish on Carson City's growth in the next couple decades there, but our, our esti, our estimated ranges there are, even, even the upper limit there is, is around one percent, and then the lower ones about, you know, 0.6 percent. So that's kind of more historically, over the long-term, where we would anticipate growth to be, you know, which puts us out towards a build-out residential population in the 20, 2050, you know, 30 years from now, or, or, or later than that. Maybe the, maybe the demographer was a sage in predicting what's going on now, and maybe, maybe we will, probably will slow down construction a little bit in the short term here, coming up soon. Let's see, okay, next slide? I think I just got a, just a, just a couple more. This is the last slide, then I'll wrap up. I get this data from the Cessor annually, I think it's, is interesting, I'm not sure how it would impact a decision on the number of residential growth management permit units you would permit in a year, but it's, it's interesting to track, which is the median sales prices of all houses and different, different housing prices. This chart goes back to before the last recession started, so you can see how long it took to climb back up to even that level, but even into 2020, the, the, the median sales price continues to climb. And from, from, from the types of projects that you've seen, and, and, you know, that have come through and approved over the last couple of years, you can see the townhomes and condominiums, that the, even the prices of those have gone up a little bit recently, and those are some of the newer products that we've seen in construction. You have some other, good, next slide, it's my last slide, just to wrap up. You have other information in, in your report, if you have any questions on any of it, be happy to help try to answer that. And I know Stephen's on the line, Dan Stuckey may still be on the line to answer any questions with regarding water or other things, if you have them. So the recommendation is pretty much, pretty much status quo, actually, as a quirky thing because of the number of units that were done, that, that, that the 672 recommended for 2021 is actually a few units less than were allocated this year, just, just by the way the formula works out, because there weren't that many, weren't as many permits last year as there were in 2018. But it's pretty much recommendation is status quo on the number of permits. So I guess I'll conclude with that and be available for questions.
Mr. Perry?
Yes, Commissioner Perry, I do have one, and it's just to understand this better, because I, you know, I wanted to compliment, I've never, never seen a document like this, and this is a great planning document. I mean, I learned so much by going through this about, about how things are done, and, and, and to have all of these different relevant departments, you know, comment on the three questions that are in here, I think is just brilliant in many ways, because it creates a lot of transparency, and hopefully gets rid of a lot of surprises. But on page 10 of 11, Alternatives in Conclusion. Okay, so it says halfway down the paragraph, "A distribution of 43% to the general property owner category and 57% to the development project category has historically been established and recommended." Can you describe what the general property owner category and development project category are like?
Sure. And the development, the development property owner category are those subdivisions or multifamily projects that have 31 or more units. So somebody comes in, has a phase of the subdivision with 31 or more, single family, they qualify for that pool, or of an apartment of 31 or more units would qualify for that pool. Everybody else has to go from the general category. This split really only applies, and, and this percentage only applies to the first period, and, and they only recently figured out, I think, I think this split ended up being that 43 and 75, because the way the distribution works in the second period, for the months four through six, it turns out that they each have about an equal amount available, each category has an equal amount available to them. And Attachment D towards the end of, towards the end of the report shows how the distribution is between those two categories, is done over the, sorry, how the distribution is done over the year.
So did I, if I could try to repeat that back, you're saying that 31 or more units is the break between those two, is that, did I understand that correctly?
Yes.
So for instance, what we were talking about earlier on, one of, one of the items on the Silver Oak, the 90-unit apartment complex, that is in the development project category?
So they would be in the development project category, especially if they came in in the, in the first period. And maybe in the second period, for the second half of the year, everybody pulls, pulls allocations out of the same pool.
Okay. So these percentages are, are, are specific to when they actually come in and pull a permit to build?
Percentage split is the split in period, so if you, if you, it might help if you refer to Attachment D, and it's the second to the last page of this report. It's kind, it's a pretty convoluted system of, over the period of six months, and then after that, how they're distinguished, but have not attempted in the 15 years or so that I've been here, to try to, try to change it, because it's horrifying, everybody's done it the same way, everybody was comfortable with it. But there's an initial split, and then some of them get combined, and they can each pool, take from the total pool for the next three months, and then at the end of six months, all the remaining ones go into one big pool, and everybody takes from them. And I think the orig, you know, initially, you know, setup, if you go back to the history table, you can see that in the, in the 80s in particular, there was a lot more units that were being pulled per year, and there was pressure getting close to the maximum. So they wanted to make sure that there were enough allocations available for the developers, while leaving enough for the, for the general builder, the person that owns their own property and wants to build a house. So it's just a method to make sure there's some equity and, and, and some allocations available for each type of developer.
If the maximum number has been 567 in the last 30 years, and our allocation is 640-something, what would have been the impact five years ago if we'd have gone to 2.5% instead of Would it have been nothing, basically, based on the history? And I'm, I'm, what I'm wrestling with is, I don't, I don't have a problem with the methodology, I just have a problem with the size of the number, you know, and, and is it so large that it, it ceases to have meaning to us, because we'll never reach it? Making sense?
To your question that we did, if we went down to that, you're looking at the chart that shows the 2.5%, and that would be a lower number. If we, if we use 2.5% for 2021, that number would be 560. I imagine two years ago, that number would have been about 550, something like that. So what would have happened is that in 2018, the apartments that came in for those units would have had to wait till the next year to, to get that last permit.
Are there any other questions? I'm sorry. Terry Preston. Commissioner Preston, go ahead. I was-
Kate Lee, I have one more question for you here, is that I see on the allocations, like for instance, this last piece of property that we looked at was the, at the lower density, when it was factored into this. Now, are they, when you factor in the densities, are you factoring in what we have approved under a special use permit?
So back to the capacity analysis, I think is what your, what your question was regarding there, and so looking at that table, it includes master plant densities of projects that we haven't seen at all, and it's just making some assumption on what somebody will come in. But there's, in many cases, the specific number is exactly what the Planning Commission has approved for either a apartment in commercial zoning, or for a subdivision that still looks for future units, yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Tingle?
As always, my concern with any future development relates to water supply. And I was doing some math associated with a document that I got from Carson City Public Works, as well as some information I received from the Carson Water Subconservancy District. And right now, actually, this was in 2017, which leads me to believe it hasn't gotten much better since then, but the groundwater source in Carson City, none of, none of the groundwater source currently, or in 2017, rather, actually came from anything in Eagle Valley. 64% of it- Sixty-four percent of it came from the town of Mindon, twenty-eight percent came from Dayton Valley, and seven percent came from Carson Valley, which I'm not sure what that equates to. Surface water, there are actually, forty-five percent of that surface water came from Eagle Valley, and thirty percent came from Dayton, and twenty-four percent came from Lake Tahoe. So I'm concerned, and I always have been, you know, that water is one of my hot buttons, because we are in a desert, we're a high desert, but we're still in a desert and we're in a drought cycle. So any, any development or, that we're looking at, I think we would be remiss in not taking into consideration the issue of water, and, you know, just denying the fact that there might be a, a climate change or whatever. I, I think that would be really short-sighted on our part. My other issue always is, as well, school overcrowding, and I had to kind of take a second look at the, the information from Mr. Stokes, where he indicated they were going to limit the number of students at the elementary school level to six-hundred-and-fifty per location, and I'm wondering how he's going to accomplish that, if there are more than six-hundred-and-fifty students at that age level. But I, I'm just, those are, those are always my two burning issues, and, you know, access to healthcare, but, you know, we can, anyway, those are a, a couple of my concerns, is that I really think we need to look at, at addressing what could potentially start being a real problem, and especially if the town of Mindon and Douglas County continue to develop the way they're going to, while we might have the water rights right now, they may become cost-prohibitive in the future and perhaps unavailable because there isn't any water. So you can have all the paper water rights you want, but if you don't have water to back those up, it's not going to matter, they're not going to matter. So that's just, again, my two hot buttons, and thank you very much.
Rick, this is Lee with the community development. So regarding the, the water, I intended to mention earlier that you've recently saw the report, you were presented the requires, say, at least within the last six months, we were presented the, the new water analysis report by the public works department, so they didn't prepare a whole new presentation for you tonight. But do you have a specific question that, we have Dan Stuckey, Stephen Potte on the line, is there anything in particular you want to address now, or was that just, I think we need, that those are things that need to be considered, and I think you will continue to, to, to see the capacity analysis brought up as new developments come in, as well as probably some annual reporting?
No, it was just some observations that I was making, because I did actually reach out to Eddie Quiglieri and to Ed James at Carson Water Subconservancy District, because water resources, water availability are a couple of, of things that I worry about, but there was also the, the median price of houses and the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand or less, nineteen percent. You know, when, when your median income is fifty-thousand dollars, I mean, nobody's going to be able to afford to buy a house here, anyway.
Well, we did, Lee, we did have that report that in, in your two-thousand-seventeen data, I don't think included, like the well off of Ormsby and some other things that have happened since then that have proved that, and I think that's what the basis, the analysis is based on. So are there any other questions for Mr. Plummel? Nope, all right. Can I have a motion? If not, I'll make it, I'll make it. All right, go ahead.
...for twenty-twenty-one, and to continue the commercial and industrial development annual average water usage threshold of fifteen thousand gallons per day for Growth Management Commission review, and including distributions and allocations for future years as further provided in the draft Board of Supervisor resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, second by Commissioner Preston, right? Okay. Commissioner S. Wine, did you second that?
I did.
All right, thank you. My, my, I can't see from the mask lady over here. All right, is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Public comment, the public is invited this time to comment on and discuss any topic that is relevant to or within the authority of the, of the, it's not the planning commission, it's the Growth Management Commission, including any matter that is not specifically included on the agenda as an action item. Is there any other comment for the Growth Management Commission?
I see no public comment, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Hearing none, I'll recon, I will adjourn, yes, the Growth Management Commission meeting and reconvene the Planning Commission for staff reports. Mr. Plummel?
Yeah, this is Lee Plummel again, Community Development Director, got a few things, I'll update, I hope, I hope this worked out okay, it sounded like you can hear me, so I hope it was okay, this was maybe the last meeting where we had the limitation, we were maxed out at capacity in the Sierra Room, so I thought I'd give this a try today, but I think going into, with the phase, recent phase two from the governor, it looks like we'll be able to have more staff in the, in the Sierra Room, so we can stay spread out, but have more staff there. My understanding is the Board of Supervisors is going to not have the public again at next week's meeting, which might have implications of how we're still going to move, move forward with Title eighteen workshops, so we'll, we'll continue to monitor, to, to monitor that. Our next, our next Title eighteen workshop is scheduled for June thirtieth, the Tuesday after the Planning Commission meeting, and we'll figure out how, if, if we're going to do that with no public or other ways, but we'll, we'll continue to move forward with, with putting, giving, giving you recommendations and making it available to the public somehow to come to review and comment on. Just on, there really weren't any, any prior items at the Board of Supervisors in the last month that I haven't already reported on. For next month's, June Planning Commission meeting, we have a few items, a five-year review of a special use permit for a storage container, a special, special use permit for a new RV, oh, for, especially for an accessory dwelling unit, or not accessory dwelling unit, accessory structure that exceeds the fifty, seventy-five percent, it's an RV garage in a residential property, and a special use permit for an outside storage facility out on Highway fifty east, and I think we'll also probably try to work on and bring back discussion and possible action for hemp regulations. That's something that we, we have, currently have the moratorium and we need to develop the regulations for the cultivation of hemp. That's all I have, thank you.
Any commissioners have a comment?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just...
Commissioner Preston.
Yeah, I was just wondering what the status is out there on the asphalt plant.
Asphalt plant, Lee, can you tell us about the asphalt plant? What's happening?
Sure, and I know could weigh into the, the appeal is being scheduled for June fourth, so they, they appealed your decision, which included modifications to the conditions, including the limitation of no smells being detected off-site, and they've appealed that and other portions of their approval to the Board of Supervisors, and again, that's, that's, so a week from, week from tomorrow, the board meeting of June fourth, that, that's going to be heard. And after that, we're still on the investigation, so the follow-up to that is, is to, that's to show, show cause. After that, we'll bring back the report regarding show cause to the Planning Commission.
Okay, good. All right, Mr. Perry? Mr. Perry?
Thank you, really, is a question, I mean, I was reading the, the phase-two governors' what can and can't happen, you know, in the last day, which starts on the twenty-ninth, so what, what changes in a planning commission meeting versus what we're doing now, do we, do we have public then because there's, or what, or is the city taking its own more-or-less approach to it? So what do we expect next month, based on this?
The, the DA's office is, you know, I think we're going to, we're going to learn more as to how it comes out on the agenda with the Board of Supervisors, the agenda will likely come out tomorrow for the meeting on June fourth. And I, you know, unless things change significantly, that's probably how your meeting in June will be run. Like I, like I indicated earlier, the first, indicate, it's possible there still won't be the public allowed, even though there's up to fifty people, gatherings of up to fifty people, I think as soon as we open any public building, it's hard to control the number. As soon as, same thing with special events, as soon as you allow a special event to occur, even if somebody says they're going to control fifty, it's hard to control the public from, from exceeding those numbers, so that might be, that's going to be a consideration. Watch the, look at the Board of Supervisors' agenda that comes out probably by tomorrow evening, and I think the regulations are going to be set by that for, for next month.
Anyone else? Lee, I have a couple for you. Tonight, tonight, we looked at the, the, that apartment house on La Pierre, and the area across the street is a residential area, and it's not correctly zoned, and it's not in the master plan. Is that one of those places where at the end of the year, we make some recommended changes to the master plan? That's a question mark, I guess we'll have to figure that out, but it, it looked like it was mislabeled or it's, it's not appropriate anymore. And the second, the second comment I have is that if, I think we needed to, or we need to continue to move on with our workshops, and if nothing else, if we could all meet on a Zoom meeting or a, a meeting like that, I think it would, I think we would probably be more productive than not doing anything. So I would, I would encourage us that if, to try and continue to, to get back to our meeting schedule one way or the other. And that was all I had, is there any other comments? All right, the public is invited at this time to comment on and discuss any topic that is relevant to or within the authority of the Planning Commission, including any matter that was not specifically included on the agenda as an action item. Is there any further public comment?
There is no public comment, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, can I have a motion to adjourn? Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Adjourned.